This is the Planning Commission meeting of April 1st. Let's begin the meeting and call it to order. I am the vice chair, so I believe I am acting as chair tonight. Let's start with any changes to the agenda. Oh, and I should say the three Planning Commission members are here tonight. Me, Stacy and Jane. Stacy and Jane are joining us remotely. We have a new vacancy. Kevin has stepped down and we had a vacancy from Mark Corbin's resignation. So we are three out of five, which is still a quorum and we can all see each other and hear each other. So here we are. Any changes to the agenda before we start cranking through it?
I do not have any.
Okay. Seeing none, let's carry on. Approval of the minutes of March 6th. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Do we want to go back to number one, the election?
Oh, well, so, yeah, that's a good point, Stacy. Originally, when we created the agenda, we had thought that we would have four people and it made sense to revote on chair and vice chair. Do we want to wait on that until we fulfill our complement and have five members again or do we want to do that now? I'm happy to put my name in as chair. Anyone else can as well, of course. If we want to elect me as chair, it would have to be unanimous because there are only three of us and we need three out of five. And if anyone would like to be vice chair, that would be great.
I would be happy to have you as chair and Jane as chair. And I would be happy to be vice chair of both.
Okay, so is that a motion for me to be planning chair, Jane to be zoning chair, and for you to be vice chair on each of them?
Yes, I would shoot for that.
I'm fine with that and would second it. We're a small group, but...
I'd second it.
All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. And if and when we get more people to fill out the last two sections, we can revisit that or we can carry on, whatever makes sense at the time. Number three, approval of the minutes. Any corrections to the minutes?
I would vote for it.
Okay. The only correction that I would like to make, because when we had talked about this last time, Shenan had written down no previous conversations were had about chair and vice chair. I would just like to correct that to no previous agreements, because I had mentioned last time I had asked Jane if she was willing to be ZBA chair, so I didn't have to be. So to say no previous conversations were had is not 100% accurate, so I'm not comfortable with that. But if you're okay with correcting that, Stacy, I'm seeing a nodding of your head. Jane, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So Shenan, those last minutes would be no previous agreements were made regarding positions. Thank you. All in favor of those changes? I think we just all agreed.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Next, reports. Mail and email. I'm a little new at this, so bear with me. The only piece of mail that I think I got, I got from the town clerk today, and it was the resignation of Kevin Kaya, which I mentioned earlier. And that has also been notified to the select board. I don't think there are any other pieces of mail and I don't think there are any new applications that have been submitted. Jane, do you know about the email?
Yeah, the email, you mean the what, the group email?
Have we received any?
No.
Okay.
No email. No report from the RPC. I should have come in more email, but there's no reports.
Okay.
For regional planning issues.
Okay. Energy board, that would be Kevin.
Kevin, yeah, he sent me an email that says, "Only news is that we are progressing well as a group and minutes are in the state."
Okay. Zoning administrator, Bob Allen is not able to be with us tonight. He had a conflict. He phoned me earlier today and said that he was not going to be here and he didn't give me anything for the agenda, so I assume that's no report for him. ZBA, Jane, any news?
Well, we postponed the all our foundation permit because there were some things that had to be looked at more closely. And so Bob Allen and I have been in contact and he's been in contact with others and hopefully we can postpone it today if we can get all the information that we need for the permit.
Okay. Okay. I think we have that on our agenda for the end, so we can talk further about when you want to schedule that. Any other reports? Anything that I'm missing? Nope. Okay. On to the next. Item five is discussing a recommendation to the select board to fill the PCZBA member, we had originally written term, but now it's two for recently opened positions. I would imagine, we now have two vacancies, I would imagine the thing to do would be to publicize that again in the Front Porch Forum and follow the procedure that we have had before, which is to hopefully take volunteers, ask them about their interest, and then make a recommendation to the select board. Other thoughts?
Any inquiries?
I have not been contacted by anyone. Have either of you or has anyone else?
No, I haven't.
And I contacted Holly to see if she wanted to be and she said she's not interested in the role.
Okay.
Do you think it would be of interest to the committee to recommend to the select board to bring this down to three temporarily?
I'm not sure you can have three.
Martha's saying she's not sure that we can.
For some reason, I'm thinking it's supposed to be between five and nine, but I can try to look that up.
I think the state statute says that it's a minimum of three, maximum of nine, maybe.
Where does it say that, Stacy?
I just, I don't know exactly. I don't think it's in the town plan, but I believe it's a state statute that it's a minimum of three, maximum of nine, but I don't have that in front of me.
So maybe we should think about that and maybe we should hold off on that right now. If we don't get anybody, that might be a good thing to do going forward, because it means that then the quorum is two and the majority is two, as opposed to quorum is three, where everybody has to be here all the time and everybody has to be unanimous all the time. So let's check out the statute, Martha, and figure out what the restrictions are, if any. And Jane, would you be willing to repost that in the Front Porch Forum and update that with two slots? You did such a nice job.
Oh, thank you. I will try to post it twice a week.
The other thing which our bylaws provide, which I noticed when I was looking at them the other day, is that we also can have alternates. So perhaps we should also suggest that the select board find us some alternates as well if we have a plethora of volunteers, which would be nice.
Maybe we can add to our listing.
Great idea.
You mean, you mean add to the listing two members of the...
Two alternates, exactly.
Yeah, I could do that.
It is between three and nine, so...
Okay. Martha just confirmed it is between three and nine. But let's see if we get, I would be inclined to wait and see if we get interest. If not, then maybe we can recommend that step.
Great.
Okay. Anything more to say on that? All right, so Jane, you're going to post in Front Porch Forum.
If I ever get home.
If you ever get home. A lot of snow between here and California.
It was.
Okay. All right. Agenda item number six. We have a lot of work to do on our journey into the Redding bylaw revisions. Martha and I have met offline, as we discussed last time, and come up with a, hopefully closer draft of performance standards. And then Martha also sent out drafts on agriculture and forestry provisions, affordable housing definitions and density, and additional housing types for consideration to be added into the bylaws. So I think we are ready to start that in record time.
Good. So since I can't share my screen, I luckily had enough copies for the folks who are here and folks who are online. Some of you have it because you're on the board. I don't know how to share it for those of you who don't have a copy.
Martha, are you comfortable just sort of, on the performance standard, just sort of running through in summary form and giving a description of where they stand now?
So they start off with a purpose statement. The purpose of these standards is to ensure that no use shall result in the emissions of dangerous or objectionable elements that adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare, or the reasonable use and enjoyment of neighboring property by its owners or lesssees, or create any injurious, noxious fire, explosive, or other hazards. So that's the purpose and that follows pretty closely with the statute.
Right.
Which we were trying to do, because that was the impression I got last time, that folks wanted to stick to the statute pretty carefully. Applicability, these standards shall apply to all uses in all districts unless specifically exempted in this section, elsewhere in the Redding zoning ordinance, or under Vermont law. And then we get into the standards for the various types of elements that might cause, might be problematic. So the first one is noise. No use shall cause, create, or result in noise that is excessive at the property line such that, when compared with other noise levels in the vicinity, it is incompatible with the reasonable use and enjoyment of neighboring property. In determining noise level, that's, determining noise that is excessive, the following decibel standards measured at the property line shall apply. And then there's just different standards for day and night, for residential, commercial, for the one-hour average, and then for an instantaneous maximum decibel level. And then goes on to say, "These noise standards shall apply to any noise that is or is expected to be a regular, permanent feature of any use. And they shall not apply to occasional noise resulting from a customary activity that is incidental to an allowed use, including but not limited to reasonable property maintenance, repairs occurring during the day, public safety sirens, emergency work for health and safety, or approved special events such as public celebrations or parades." It says including but not limited to. So it could be other things, just not something that's going to make a significant amount of noise all day, every day, you know? As part of...
Did you mind if I sort of note something here? Just to give everyone points of reference, I did a little bit of research. So normal conversation is 60 decibels. A lawn mower is 94. A hand drill is 98. A motorcycle is 105. An ambulance siren is 112. Chainsaw is 115 to 120. Diesel truck is 114. And a gun shot is 160 to 170. Just as a point of hard words I just were having this discussion, I thought I'd throw that out.
Yeah. And if any of those higher level things were going to happen all day, every day, you know, that could be problematic. On the end of this, which some of you have because of notes, it says that noise levels of 120 decibels is considered the threshold for pain. One exposure to a noise level that exceeds 140 decibels can cause damage. Noise levels that exceed 85 over an extended period of time will harm hearing. So that's the purpose of making sure that these stay below a level that's really going to cause a problem for a neighbor, either, you know, to their health or hearing or peaceful enjoyment of their property.
The other thing I would note, I looked through a lot of other towns zoning rules on noise to see what they say, and this is, this is pretty permissive. A lot of them are lower volume amounts by 10 or 15, I don't know what you would call them, points, decibels, and are just prohibitions. You can't have noise louder than X. So I think the goal of this is to strike a reasonable balance between people living their lives, exempting repairs and maintenance and, you know, stuff that's customary activity, and stuff that would really destroy your neighbor's reasonable enjoyment and peace on their property. So we, Martha and I have looked at a lot of different examples. We looked at the state statute and this, to me, seems like a pretty good balance. But of course, I'd like to hear from other people if you agree. And maybe the thing to do is try to think of something and then see if it fits in here and if it's exempted or if it would be a problem.
And I also want to just read the last paragraph, because it talks about temporary noise too. So in approving a use that is expected to temporarily exceed the sound level standards of this section, for example, the construction phase of a project, the ZBA shall impose conditions, for example, limit the construction activities to specific days of the week and/or hours of the day to mitigate the adverse impacts to neighbors. So if there was going to be a construction project that was going to go on for a long time or, then you wouldn't want them necessarily doing it till 10 o'clock at night, or doing it on holidays, or doing it on weekends, what is really going to bother people. So the, so the ZBA could say, okay, you know, seven to seven during weekdays or whatever.
Monday, Friday, or whatever.
Yeah.
Could we make that a condition in the application instead of putting it in the bylaws, making it a condition of each application for construction?
I would think it would have to be in the bylaws in order for it to be a condition of the application. That would be my perception. What do you think?
It would be, it would be easier, I think, to have a backup for why are you making that? Why are you making that condition? Why are you putting that condition on your approval?
The other thing that I found in looking at all these different towns is that it is pretty typical to have these in here. I didn't, I didn't look at all of them in the entire state of Vermont, but I looked at, you know, two dozen picking and choosing here and there, Wardsville, London Dairy, Warren, Ludlow, Woodstock. And all of them have some form of performance standards. And we can also go on and look at the rest of them. It's not just noise. To put a little bit of guardrails around uses in various, you know, property areas that would affect neighbors. So after doing all that research, I was initially kind of, I was initially kind of skeptical and I convinced myself that it's actually not unreasonable. But that's just me.
I think my only concern is neighbors potentially weaponizing us against one another if there's a disagreement between neighbors.
I think that the use would have to be something, I mean, we specifically included that it would have to be a regular, permanent feature of any use. Otherwise, this doesn't apply. So like when you, when you include it in your home business, yeah, when you include it under home business, if someone's going to be doing something 40 hours a week that exceeds these standards, then that would be a legitimate complaint.
And it has to be incompatible, when measured at the property line, it has to be incompatible with the reasonable use and enjoyment of neighboring property. That's a pretty high bar.
Yes.
And if that is incompatible, Jane is my neighbor. If I'm doing something that measured at my property line is incompatible with our neighborhood in a regular, ongoing way that's a permanent feature of my use, that's a pretty big imposition.
A question?
Yes.
Were leaf blowers still fit into this?
They would be exempted as reasonable property maintenance. So there's an exemption for reasonable property maintenance and repairs. Some towns list all the things that that would be, leaf blower, lawn mower, chainsaw. Actually, they don't list chainsaws. I use my chainsaw all the time, because trees fall down all the time. So Martha and I were trying to figure out a way that when you're maintaining your property, that's not an issue here.
What was the question I gave?
Leaf blower. I was wondering where leaf blowers fall and I didn't hear it on your list of noise levels. So they, in town, they are extremely loud.
So you wish we didn't have them, is that what you're saying?
In town, I sure do.
Well, the trend is going bad, we've operated, so I would imagine, give it a couple of years and maybe it won't be an issue anymore. We can leave that for now and keep going, or we can keep talking about it. Maybe carry on with the list, Martha?
Okay. The others are simpler. Noise was the tricky one. So the initial intro, "No use shall cause, create, or result in vibration that is discernible at the property line of the parcel from which the vibration is emanating without the use of instruments."
Any comments on that?
No.
Me neither.
So this, "No use shall cause, create, or result in smoke, dust, noxious gases, objectionable odors, or other forms of air pollution which adversely affect neighboring property or public health, safety, or welfare, or which is offensive or uncharacteristic of the area."
Can I ask a question? I'm confused as to whether the public can take part in these conversations or does the public have to wait until public comments at the end of the meeting?
It's a good question, right. Our bylaws provide that public comments should take place at the end of the meeting, unless the chair wants to pepper them in throughout. I guess in the interest of efficiency, I'd rather not have big back and forths, but if you have a question or a comment in this small group with this small bunch of folks, I would suggest that we just hear them out. So Jane, you were having a question about the leaf blowers. If you have something, what's your concern?
Okay, my question would be, if someone thought that there was an issue on their property, first off, who would they contact and who can actually enforce these regulations?
Ah, that's going to the big, big issue. That's not everything on this list, is it? I believe that the enforcement of zoning, so the question was who enforces the zoning of these early regulations. The question, enforcement of zoning, I believe, falls to the ZA in the first instance. So it would be up to the zoning administrator, which is Bob Allen, to be contacted. So if I am your neighbor and I am spewing noxious gases over the property line at you and you come to me and I am not stopping, I think your next call would be to Bob Allen.
Okay. But he can't actually enforce it?
I think that there are provisions in zoning codes for violations of zoning codes that have to do with monetary penalties. Is that right, Martha?
Yes.
So like anything, if you built a shed on your property that wasn't permitted, who enforces it? The zoning administrator. And if it, if it isn't brought into compliance with the code, down the road, it would probably turn into some kind of appeal to the environmental court. Does that make sense?
Sure. I mean, obviously for, you know, zoning regulations, buildings and that sort of thing, but things on this list, such as excessive noise and things like that, I mean, if you call Bob Allen, number one, I'm not sure he would be even willing to step in. And if he did, he could tell to kiss off. He's not making any more noise than anybody else does.
But I think it would then track through the zoning process. So whatever, any processes for zoning violations, it would follow that process. The zoning administrator would look at the rule, try to interpret the rule, give their feedback to the recent question if the property owner disagreed. There's a mechanism for that in our zoning bylaws.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
And again, it's, for noise, it's a regular, permanent feature of the property. So it's not you blowing leaves for a couple hours.
Well, I understand.
Yeah.
Other thoughts on that?
I don't know.
Okay. Let's see, what have we covered? Vibrations and smoke. Noxious gases. Number four.
"No use shall cause, create, or result in release of heat, cold, moisture, mist, fog, or condensation which adversely affects neighboring property or public health, safety, or welfare."
Any comments on that?
No.
Okay.
"No use shall cause, create, or result in electromagnetic disturbances or electronic transmission or signals that interfere with the reception of radio, television, satellite, internet, or other electronic signals, or which otherwise adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare, except as specifically licensed and regulated through the Federal Communications Commission."
Keep going.
All right. "No use shall cause, create, or result in glare, light, or reflection which adversely affects neighboring property or public health, safety, or welfare, or impairs the vision of motor vehicle operators."
This is a little bit subjective, in my opinion. I think you could have a 100-watt bulb on the side of your building and disturb a neighbor potentially, and they would want a 40-watt bulb. So it could flare up some neighboring issues that can be resolved by that.
We have other, there are other examples... We have other, there are other examples. If you can put your hands on them faster than I can, Martha, go ahead.
There's a whole, like booklet that was created for lighting. I mean, some towns say, you know, that outdoor light has to be downcast to prevent it from spilling out farther than necessary. You can have lights that are on timers or motion-activated. So, I mean, we could look into other examples to try and find something that's more specific or less subjective or... I mean, I, one thing, I mean, you don't want it blasting into your neighbor's window or blasting into the, you know, where cars are coming up the road and then they're blinded by your light. That's the main purpose of something like this.
Yeah, I mean, none of this is meant to be weaponized against your neighbor. It's really meant to provide everybody with some comfort in their own rights and enjoyment of their property. I'm just looking to see if I can find really quickly a different option. So a couple of examples are, these are what Martha had originally handed out. In Bolton, they say glare, lumen, light, or reflection which constitutes a nuisance to other property owners or tenants, or impairs the vision of motorcycle operators, or is otherwise detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. So I guess if you ride a bike, you're okay. If you're driving a car, it doesn't matter up in Bolton. West Windsor. Excess lighting beyond the minimum required for safety and security and/or lighting which is inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. So that's pretty strict. No excessive direct light shall be visible from the property line. Use of motion LED infrared controlled timer and downlighting is encouraged. Shielded lighting is okay upwards if it's on an American flag. That's what West Windsor. Weathersfield. Glare, light, or reflection which constitute a nuisance to other property owners or tenants, impairs vision of motorcycle operators, or is detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. So in comparison, it's, I think it's lighter than that. If we still think there's a chance that it will be misused, we can, we can look for other examples which feel less onerous.
Yeah, I don't, I agree with you, but I don't think it's onerous. I just, I guess my proposal is not having neighbors, like you said, weaponizing against one another.
So this is Woodstock. Oh, no, sorry, this is Ludlow. This one seems pretty good, or maybe this is like ours. No glare, lights, or reflections shall be permitted which could impair the vision of any driver, not just motorcycles, of any motor vehicle, or which are detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare.
I like that.
So rather than try to draft on the fly on this one, why don't we take this offline and rewrite incorporating the Ludlow-style version to match our language and then bring it back next time? Does that work?
Yeah. Andy says you have it right there, that Ludlow version.
Yep. Ludlow. No glare, lights, or reflections which could impair the vision of a driver, of any motor vehicle, or which are detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. So the only thing Ludlow is leaving out is adversely affecting a neighboring property. But we need to think about that, right? If I have my lights shining at my neighbor's house, that's not an awesome situation for the neighbor.
Yeah, I can see that argument.
So let's...
And then somebody could say they're driving down 106 and they see a light in the middle of the forest and they don't agree with that.
I think it has to impair their vision. Shall we take that one back to the drawing board and
Yeah, we can, we can...
Bring forth another option?
We have the Ludlow one and then we have ours, our drafts here, so we got something, you know, one or the other in.
Let's see what Woodstock says. Hold on. So just as a comparison, Woodstock says, no uses shall create glare by lighting or reflection of materials. That's it. So I think in trying to craft ours, we were really trying to tie it to affecting public health, safety, and welfare, impairing vision, or adversely affecting, which just parallels the language in the rest of the examples.
I mean, something like downcast lighting, you know, for someone who, maybe someone comes home from a, you know, late shift at 2:00 in the morning or something and they, and they want that light to come on so they can find their way to the door. But if it's downcast, it's, you know, not going to shine in their neighbor's window and wake them up. That's, something like that's an option to consider.
I like the idea of the downcast or the timer or the motion detector. I mean, those are easy to put in and they help out, or you need them to help out and they'll go off.
In whichever town that was, those were suggested. Is that right?
Right, maybe encouraged.
Encouraged.
I think it was Westfield's.
Yeah, I think Ludlow elsewhere in their regulations actually does have something else on lighting that may require it to be downcast or shielded.
So it's West Windsor, which we had, which Martha had provided last time, that says excess beyond the minimum required for safety and security. We could go that route. Which is inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. No excessive direct light shall be visible from the property line. And then it goes on to say the use of motion-activated LED, infrared-controlled, timer-controlled, and downlighting is encouraged. Shielded uplighting or downlighting at the American flag is okay. I mean, we could, we could absolutely say...
On that, you just, that seems a little bit too far, too overreaching.
West Windsor?
Just for everyone's reference, the Act 250 permits generally do outline lighting as downlighting or safety, or safety requirements. We don't have to spend too much more time on this. We can, we can come back to it if we need to.
Okay. I mean, the only thing that you are worried about is where it says adversely affects neighboring property. Right now, it's adversely affects neighboring property or public health, safety, and welfare, or impairs the vision of motor vehicle operators. The only thing you're concerned about is neighboring property, right? Not public health, safety, and welfare.
Exactly.
All right. So let's, let's take that one offline, look at some other examples, think it through, and then we can bring it back to the meeting next time. If that makes sense.
Okay, so the next one is no use shall cause, create, or result in liquid or solid refuse or waste, the disposal which places undue burden on municipal or regional disposable facilities, or which pollutes surface or groundwater or soil, or which adversely affects neighboring property or public health, safety, or welfare.
I'm fine with that.
And last, no use shall cause, create, or result in undue fire, explosion, radioactive emission, or other safety hazard which endangers the public, public facilities or neighboring property, or which result in a significantly increased burden on municipal facilities or services.
I'm fine with that.
Gotcha. Awesome.
Yes.
And then there's two, there's three, well, there's three more statements that aren't the no, no use shall cause, et cetera. One just says agricultural operations that are subject to required agricultural practices as defined and administered by the Vermont Agency of Agriculture shall observe those practices. And forestry operations as defined in Vermont statute in Article 7 shall observe accepted silvicultural practices as defined and administered by the Vermont Department of Forest Parks and Recreation. And then all uses shall meet state air and water pollution standards.
And agricultural and forestry operations are not subject to these performance standards, yes? Because they follow their own guidelines?
Well... They, well, we, when we get to the accessory on-farm business, we do include performance standards. So...
But not for agricultural logging and...
Not for forestry?
Logging, forestry operations, they have a completely state guideline, correct?
I mean, for, the definite, as defined, forestry operations, I mean, those are, those are allowed as defined.
So if someone needs to log their land, that's falling into...
The logging noise, it wouldn't qualify for. But there, if certain businesses that might fall under accessory on-farm businesses, it could apply to that, like if someone...
Yeah, two separate, two separate things.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay. Great. So I think, how have, how have we dealt with this in the past? Have we voted on pieces going forward, or do you just sort of put this to bed, put it in the draft for future consideration by the Select Board and consider this piece done?
Different towns do it different ways. So, you know, you could move to accept, except for number six on glare for further development, or you could...
Jane, Stacy?
I'm good with just moving forward. It's basically going to be a recommendation at the end of the day to the Select Board. We'll give them our recommendations and I think we have agreement on everything but one and we just need to tweak that language.
Yeah.
I really like the time periods on the noise. I'm comfortable with the limits, the minimum or the average and the maximum. And the language surrounding it's an ongoing operational type situation versus a once-off instance.
Yeah, so the minutes will reflect that, discuss everyone's...
What we're talking about is the light and glare.
Yeah, we're going to re, we're going to find more examples and try to retool that, that, in a way that feels less subjective and bring that back. But otherwise, I think what we're saying, Shenan, for the purposes of the minutes, is that this, we agree to put this into our working draft and that this is acceptable. And we'll revisit the number six on the lighting next time. Okay. Good. Martha, what's next? Hold on.
Was it, I think it was the accessory farm.
Accessory farm. Well, according to the, according to the agenda, it's review finalized revised graphs of agriculture and forestry provisions. Oh, yeah, accessory on-farm business. Yes.
Well, there's, yeah, there's a few other smaller related things. So... You can pull up my email that I sent. Okay, so right now in your zoning regulations, you have a definition for agriculture and forestry product processing, which is the processing of agricultural or forestry products for sale to or consumption by others. And we talked at the last meeting about how that's kind of an overreach. And so what I was suggesting as an alternative was to take the agricultural part out of that, just have forestry product processing and specify that it's the off-site processing of forestry products for sale to or consumption by others. Because if it's on the site of where, of a logging operation, for example, then it's exempt from zoning. So... And in addition to keeping that definition as revised, I suggested that you include forestry operations under your exemption section and then in your definition section. And that since you removed agriculture from the agricultural forestry product processing, I suggested that you add accessory on-farm business as an alternative. So...
So accessory on-farm business is part of the state statute or is it something created?
This is, the state statute is permissive on this. So you can regulate it. It's kind of regulated by default by the state if you don't regulate it. But it's kind of helpful to have it in there so people know. It does come up fairly frequently and I think it's helpful to the ZA, to the ZBA, and to applicants to kind of know what's, you know, what's allowed by just looking at the zoning regulations.
So to clarify for us in the public side, you mentioned applicants, so you're, we're speaking about new applicants wishing to do an accessory farm business?
Right.
We don't, it wouldn't be for anything existing?
Presumably, they don't have one of these unless they've gone, unless it's exempt or they've already gone through some sort of a process.
Okay, so that would be a question I think for the committee is... Okay, so that would be a question I think for the committee is finding out if this would impact anyone who has an existing quote-unquote accessory on farm business?
I mean...
Applications, I think we can create guidelines and, and move forward, but going and, and addressing this with people who have been doing this for quite a period of time, I, I think would be more targeted.
I mean, I'd have to look at what your language says about pre-existing non-conforming uses. You may, you know, if something is already, someone's already doing something that doesn't conform, I mean, this is pretty broad, I think, so I think it would allow a lot of things, but...
Well, the way I read it, uh, the language that you're proposing, Martha, an accessory on farm business located on a farm is an allowed use. So i- if anything, it's making it, it's making it, uh, an allowed use, and then I guess we would have to change our little charts in section two, yeah?
Well, it's saying subject to site plan review.
Subject to site plan.
So, which just enables the town to look at it and say, you know, yes, you can do this, but you need more parking, or, you know, if you're gonna host weddings, farm weddings, you know, you need something, you know, whatever, whatever it might be.
So do you know what our, uh, language is in the zoning bylaws about pre-existing businesses?
Let me look it up.
I have to believe those should be grandfathered, but...
Well, I understand the idea, right, but we'll be senses since they've been in use for many, many years, but, uh, we have to take into consideration environmental challenges that we didn't have before, and that may create a different situation.
Okay, so... So a non-conforming use may be continued subject to the following conditions.
Sorry, what section's that?
Um, it's section 3.6.
Okay.
Non-conforming use may be changed to another non-conforming use upon the approval of the zoning board, but only if the board finds that the degree of non-conformity of the new use is not greater than the original non-conforming use. And such use shall not have an undue adverse effect upon the character of the area or district in which it is located and complies with the general standards set forth in section 2.4. A non-conforming use that has been discontinued may be reestablished within six months of the date of its last use. A non-conforming use which has been discontinued for a period greater than six months but less than 12 months may only be reestablished with the approval of the zoning board of adjustment. In approving or disapproving the reestablishment of a non-conforming use, the zoning board of adjustment shall apply the standard and impose such conditions as are collectively set forth in section 5.2. A non-conforming use shall not be reestablished if discontinued for a continuous period of one year regardless of intent except as in subsection five below.
So what's your takeaway on all that, Martha? If someone has a farm, uh, accessory farm business right now, if I have an accessory farm business right now that I'm happily running, and we adopt this, or actually, we're not adopting anything, we recommend this to the Select Board for adoption, I don't have a, an accessory farm use, by the way, um, on farm business.
Usually, non-conforming sections say something along the lines of an existing non-conforming use can continue indefinitely. And, and then they have provisions for, you know, changes or discontinuances. I don't see that language in here, so maybe you want to add that? Pre-existing non-conforming uses?
I think, um, I, I think we need to get to the bottom of that. But I'm not sure I can flip through 150 pages and find it in this meeting. So maybe the thing to do is to take that one offline as well and look for how that would affect, uh, existing accessory on farm businesses. What do we think?
Yeah, I agree, I, I think we should dig into this a little bit further because, you know, there's, there's farms in Redding, you know, all around the area, not just Redding, that have, you know, maple in operation, surf operations, they have, you know, um, garden harvesting type operations. We just don't want to, I, in my opinion, we don't want to impact any of those people who have been doing what they're doing for a very long time.
No, we're not looking to put anybody out of business, that's for sure. Okay, I think, I think we should all in a quiet time flip through the zoning ordinance and run that scenario through it and see if we can figure out, uh, whether existing non-conforming use can continue indefinitely as you suggest. Makes sense?
Sure.
Yes.
Should we continue to look at this section, but just kind of flag that as a...
Yeah.
Okay, so... An accessory on farm business located on a farm, both as defined herein, is an allowed use and may take place inside new or existing structures or on the land subject to site plan approval, provided that the business complies with all of the following. The business is operated by the farm owner, one or more persons residing on the farm, or the lessee of a portion of the farm. The farm meets the threshold criteria for the applicability of the required agricultural practices rules as set forth in those rules. The activities associated with the business meet the performance standards of whatever section that may be if we include them. All structures and uses associated with the accessory on farm business comply with the water and wastewater provisions of section 3.11. That's the portion that would go in Article 4 as a, you know, specific use, and then there's a bunch of definitions that go with that. And all of the definitions, by the way, are straight out of the statute.
Straight out of the state statute.
They're straight out of the state statute.
I actually compared them to the straight state statute, thank you for including that reference, that makes it so much easier.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, and I don't have any, uh, they are parroting the state statute, so I don't have any issue with that. I guess my only concern would be that, um, these seem like reasonable guidelines going forward. Uh, I just wouldn't want to hurt anybody's existing business when they haven't been, um, expecting this.
I agree with that.
So we'll make sure that either here or in the non-conforming use section, we clarify that, not trying to put anyone out of business.
That, that's the last thing Redding needs, right?
Right.
Okay.
So we can...
So that's a, that's a thumbs up, subject to, uh, confirming the grandfathering. Yep. And then we would need to... Would this be, where would you, where would you have this in mind for Article 4? Going into it somewhere or adding it at the end?
Right now, Article 4 is alphabetical. You could keep it alphabetical, it would just mean that you'd have to make sure that any references...
Get updated?
That, because, you know, are changed by inserting this in between two other sections. That would make the references in the sections that come after it potentially incorrect, so...
We should be able to handle conforming our section, right?
I don't, I don't think that would be too big a lift to do that if you want to keep it alphabetical.
Do we want to keep it alphabetical?
I think so.
Okay. I, I think we can update our section numbers in all the sections. I'll, I'll, I'll take that up.
Well, it's the reference, it's the references.
Yeah.
That can be tricky.
Well, once we get our initial draft, you know, then I'll go down through it and improve it and make sure the references are correct.
Um, let's see, so does that cover, what are we looking at now, the forest product process, processing? Have we, have we already covered that as part of this, or do we need to discuss that?
So, yeah, so this kind of takes the place of the agriculture in that other definition, the other definition, forestry product processing, the off-site processing of forestry products for sale to or consumption by others. You know, is everyone okay with making that the new, new definition?
Where did we just go?
Uh, we're looking at the definition, um, of forest product processing, which is in, um, Martha, Martha's email to us.
It's in your current definition under agriculture and forestry product processing?
So it used to be a definition, uh...
And it used to require conditional use, so...
Under A. So now, so it used to be agricultural and forest product processing. Agriculture is now struck and it's stricken, struck, and it's just forest product processing with this revised definition that Martha has given us. Off-site processing of forestry products for sale to or consumption by others.
That's the only thing.
And wait, say that last thing you just said about the, the use?
What did I say?
You said it was allowed use? No, not an allowed use.
The off-site processing of forestry products for sale to or consumption by others. Before, it just said the processing, but you can process forestry products on the site of a logging operation. That's not subject to regulation. So by saying off-site, you're at least regulating something that you're allowed to regulate.
And this is a conditional use?
Yeah, yeah, it, currently, it's a conditional use.
And are you suggesting that it stays a conditional use or moves to a permitted use?
It could stay as a conditional use.
So that, you're not suggesting that change?
Right.
That's, that's fine with me.
Yeah, so it's still, it remains a conditional use, we're just making these, these edits that are on that one point, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And then forestry operations are exempt, you don't currently list it as an exemption, so you should, because it is. Um, then you should also include the definition of forestry operation in Article 7, and I did send you that definition.
Add forestry operations to section 5.1.2 exemptions.
She's recommending that we list it as an, it's exempt.
So putting it in, so I'm looking at a black line, I think it, I think you prepared it, Martha, that was on the Mark website, uh, or maybe the town website. And I heard a C forestry operations inserted into the exemptions in black line, is that, was that prospective? As number three?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So it's already in there, we, we're just saying we...
I, I put it in there as a suggestion.
Okay.
For, but we hadn't discussed it yet, so we're discussing it now.
So I think in, in the draft I'm looking at, uh, it's already in and looks fine to me.
And like I said, the, um, definition of forest, forestry operations is right out of statute, 100%.
And is that in here? Two already, it is, right? It is?
Yes.
So in the black line, the working black line, forestry operations has already been added in there? Um, question. Activities related to the management of forests, including a bunch of things, timber harvest, pruning, planting, blah, blah, blah. Do we need including without limitation because there might be other things? Or are we happy to say including because that is the list of things?
I mean, this was, again...
Right out of the statute.
Right out of statute, so...
Okay, let's leave it alone now.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes. Yes.
And these are the things that are exempt, so... Uh, maybe the state is saying there, if it's something else, it's not exempt. But it's pretty broad, so...
Okay. Any comments on forestry operations?
I'm good.
Jane, you good? You're in the California sunshine, I can tell, you're good. Um, tweak section 5.3 so it no longer excludes agricultural activities. Did we do that already?
We did not do that already.
So... Section 5.3 is site plan review. And what is the tweak you're proposing?
So right now, it says site plan review is generally required for commercial and development type applications, excluding daycare, group homes, agricultural activities and one or two family homes. So you would just need to take out excluding agricultural activities. Or somehow clarify that accessory on farm businesses are subject to site plan review. I think the type that's meant to be exempt are below the threshold of needing to qualify for, or needing to follow the required agricultural practices, so... You know, you have your backyard vegetable garden or whatever, that's, that wouldn't apply.
I'm comfortable with striking it.
I am too. Jane? Comfortable? Yes, okay. Um, okay. So does that take... So does that take us through the accessory on-farm business section?
Yeah, I think that's all the forestry and ag stuff.
Okay. So next on my list is looking at the affordable housing definitions and housing types like senior housing or cottage courts and exploring the definitions of what those are, density bonuses, inclusionary zoning. You want to walk us through that?
So your definition of affordable housing, your existing definition, was inconsistent with the definition in state statute. I don't know if it was consistent with an earlier version of the definition or not, but...
So, I gotta find that section. What is it that the state is saying we're not citing? What is it they're wanting that we're not doing?
So currently, it says, "The definition for affordable housing is housing that is either owned by its inhabitants, whose gross annual income does not exceed 80% of the county median income." For owned housing, the threshold is 120%, not 80%. And then for rented housing, it's 80%.
This is the state's definition?
Yes, yeah.
I'm sorry. I know I just received the one on senior housing and I don't receive the one on cluster housing. Am I missing something? So I need to go back to my email?
So it's an email from March 26th at 5:00 PM. If that helps find it. And it's just a definition of the affordable housing, Stacy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The state's definition. So it looks like this, it looks like the state is putting a lot more granularity on what affordable housing is. Our current definition just says, "A housing development of which at least 20% of the units or five units, whichever is greater, are affordable units. Affordable units are subject to covenants and restrictions that are preserve affordability, but we never defined affordable."
Well, that's the, that is the definition of affordable housing development, but affordable housing, which is right above that in your zoning?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
The discrepancy there was the 80%, which is now 120%.
Why did they put it up? Because if you own your home, that's an asset?
I don't know why they changed it. I just know that it's, what it says now is 120 and what you have is 80, so, I mean...
So do we have to do 120? Like, is that a rule?
I mean, it could be, I mean, it's, would cover more, so we might be start to cover some of them, missing middle type housing.
It's my understanding it can't be more restrictive than what the state allows, correct? Or can't it be more... Regarding affordable housing?
I'm trying to think would. Like, if you said 70%, no, I think you would have to be at least at 80% for, yeah. So if you did go lower, you'd be more restrictive as to what counts as affordable housing.
You're comparing the owner occupied 120% versus our old 80%?
So if you reduce the 120, you'd be being more restrictive.
So 120 is more generous, so more people will qualify?
Right, but if you said, we don't want to go with 120, we want to go with 90 or whatever. Then there are people who would otherwise qualify as needing affordable housing or whatever, who wouldn't qualify under your definition.
If this is the state's definition and makes more people eligible for affordable housing, I'm fine with that.
I think that's what it does if I'm thinking about it, right?
That's what you're telling me.
I mean, we can look into it, but...
So I think we agree with this one. Let's offline just double check that this is meaning what we are.
Right.
Thinking that it's meaning.
Certainly, Martha, our definition is 80% correct?
Yes, for both owned housing and rented housing. So the other thing that I proposed in this affordable housing, I believe I copied the statutory definition, which I find... So I'll give an example. So it says, "For owner occupied housing, for which the total annual cost of ownership, including principal, interest, taxes, insurance, and condominium association fees, does not exceed 30% of the gross annual income of a household at 120% of the highest of the following." And then it lists the county median income, the standard metropolitan statistical area median income, and the statewide median income. So what I was proposing is that you cross out the standard metropolitan statistical area median income because that doesn't apply to Redding. And just keep county median and statewide median. However, then, all those three things are then repeated under rental housing. Same three things, so... So the definition that I crafted for you eliminates that redundancy of having those two things repeated under each of them. So I can read it if you don't have it in front of you or read it for the folks who don't have it in front of them.
I'm trying not to glaze over as you read that. So I did read that and at the time that I was reading it, it made sense to me to take out that metropolitan statistical.
Right.
Because that doesn't apply to us.
And then condense them so you don't have to repeat the county median and the state median.
Yeah. So I am not able to find it right now, but I know when I looked at it before, I was comfortable with the definition.
Okay, I mean, I don't mind reading it.
Jane, Stacy? Are you looking at that? Are you comfortable with that? Should we?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So it's really just taking out the inapplicable standard metropolitan statistical median?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, right, yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, it is slightly reworded, but it's got all the exact same meaning in there. It's just a little clearer, I think.
Okay.
And then you're just, you're providing the two different, the owner, you're providing the two things.
Yeah, the owner and the rental.
Well, there's still an A and a B, so...
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I guess what I eliminated was saying, "As defined by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development." I reduced the number of times it says that.
Thank you. Yeah, we don't need to repeat that 100 times. Okay. So that's the affordable housing definition. All right. Now where is the density bonus?
So, let's see. So density bonus, I know I sent you something. Okay, so, under the planned unit development standards, which is section 5.4.4, number three, you do have a density bonus that you offer.
Point four. Number three.
So it says, "The overall density of projects shall not exceed 125% of the number of dwelling units permitted if the land were subdivided into lots in accordance with the standards for the district in which the land is situated, except where specifically permitted in these regulations and as permitted below." And then there's... Okay, so under A, it's, you can have more units if the, some of the land is set aside as open space. And then under B, "An additional density bonus of 25% of the permitted overall density may be permitted in instances in which not less than 20% of the total number of dwelling units created are affordable housing units as defined in Article Seven."
So we are not currently required to change this by law?
No, no. I'm just, I just put it out there and we're talking about affordability. If you wanted to make a change there, that would be one place to make a change. There are towns that do inclusionary zoning and I sent some language about that from the statute about that where... I mean, it applies, I think, more when a town has public water and sewer and you, for example, you could have apartment buildings with 10 or 20 units in them and you can then specify X number of those units have to be affordable. Like, whenever, any housing development with 10 or more units, 20% of them have to be affordable or something like that.
That doesn't apply to us?
I can't see it applying and, I mean, I don't know how you would have something that large without public water and sewer.
I don't see it happening.
Yeah.
And if we did have that kind of housing, I don't know that we would want to hamstring any kind of extra requirements onto that, but I don't see it happening.
I thought I would mention that it exists out there.
Yeah.
Ray, did you have some thoughts you want to share?
Not necessarily applicable in Redding.
Ray's not speaking, he's just shaking his head back and forth. Okay, so I think what we're saying is we are comfortable with the current density bonuses as they stand and they don't need revision, is that right? Okay.
That one was quick and easy.
That one was quick and easy. How's our time? 8:30, okay.
So are you ready for senior housing?
Yeah, let's talk about senior housing.
Senior housing, so your town plan talks about senior housing? I may have sent some quotes or some references, but your zoning bylaws don't currently have anything about it. They do say, "Anything that's not permitted is prohibited." Let's see. Uh, let's see, where is that? Okay, under section one...
Martha, does the state provide you the definition for senior housing?
This one is from the Federal Fair Housing Act. So, the one that I'm...
The state doesn't outline anything.
I think the state probably follows the federal regulations as well. I mean, I think they have to probably, so...
So currently, our town plan expresses an interest in senior housing.
Your zoning regulations don't make any provision for it and under section 1.2, it says, "Any use not permitted by these regulations shall be deemed prohibited." So by not making an allowance for it, it's not allowed.
So if we wanted to make an allowance for senior housing, where would that go? Somehow I always need to figure out where it's going to go before I can fully grasp what it's saying.
Well, I mean, I thought as a minimum, you could put a definition in and you could decide, you know, where, which districts you want to have senior housing in. At least that would keep it from being prohibited.
Why would it need to be per district? Why couldn't we just do it in all districts?
I mean, 25 acre district, I don't know.
Well, there are currently limitations on what you can put on your RR whatever, right? So I think we should think through where, as a public policy matter, where we would want that to go. If one wanted to do that, where would that go?
So think maybe out of lots, so let's say we have a cottage development that's a 55 and over development. We would want to restrict that to a district if it conformed per the cottage development definition?
Possibly. I mean, you know, maybe you only want to restrict it from your industrial district or... I mean, I was thinking there'd be more likely to happen in the village if the village gets water and sewer, but if someone were willing and able to build a large enough community septic system for a cottage development, you know, for young families or seniors or, you know, whoever, I suppose that could be an option.
Can't just use a simple house instead of it being not permitted if it's just one simple thing permitted?
But that would make it permitted in any residential district, right? So you might buy a single-family home next to a single-family home and then a cottage development springs up next to you. Is that what that means?
Well, I mean, if you just add it as a definition and a conditional use or something and it's in the 25 acre district, then in order, you know, then you need 25 acres per unit. So if you're going to have 10 senior houses, you'd need 250 acres. So you may want to think about maybe something simpler than a PUD. I mean, the cottage development language that I sent you does allow greater density without going through the whole PUD process, so if you combine them, you know, then that would be one way to get around the 25 acres per unit. I don't remember off the top of my head what the language was in the cottage thing.
I feel like...
I just think we're going to endorse senior house and we should just like it to be allowed anywhere.
I'm not sure I'm there. I think I need to learn a lot more about this. Could you have cottage courts without water and sewer? Could you have them on a drilled well and with robust septic?
A cottage court?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's, yeah, if the septic plan met the criteria, the state's water and wastewater criteria.
So having water and sewer isn't necessarily a barrier to having a cottage court?
No.
No.
But, I mean, having a septic system that's robust enough to handle, you know, however many units, that's not a small, easy thing, inexpensive.
It'd be a very expensive project. Maybe have the land needed for such an extensive system as well with the right soil conditions.
So me personally, I feel like I am not prepared to... So me, me personally, I feel like I am not prepared to endorse this through all districts because I'm just not familiar enough with the implications of that. I think I need to think about this one.
I'm sorry, Jane, what?
No, I agree with that because I remember, well, just last year, we changed the zoning regulation in the town to permit more units per acre, so I'm not for, I mean, there's too much research that needs to be done yet to make the decision as far as-
And we're specifically speaking about senior housing?
Yes.
So where, just, or, out of interest, where do you feel senior housing would be best suited in Redding?
I don't know, I have no idea, I'm just saying that, um, you know, I'm just saying that so many regulations changed in the town prior, just a few months ago. So I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying I'd like to go back and do more research about how this could be feasible, you know, in our town.
And are we speaking senior housing as like a multi-resident senior housing like that?
Well, yeah.
Or are we speaking about individual housing?
It could be either.
Multi-unit or like-
Multi, multi.
Even, or like with the cottage courts, anything.
It's defined as a housing facility or community that is intended and operated for occupancy by persons fifty-five years and older.
I mean, I think the definition is fine. The definition is fine, it's then what you do with that definition, and I just have not, I don't think, I think we would have to really think through the implications of what kind of use that would be in which district, and does that make sense? Maybe it does, but I, I'm, I haven't, I haven't caught up yet in my mind.
And then with this also, I think another question for us would be, does this also include assisted living facilities?
It could.
In this definition, Martha, in towns?
It, it could, it's a fairly broad definition, so.
Right.
I mean, the, one of the reasons they, that you would have a definition for senior housing is because otherwise you can't discriminate against younger people, for example, you know, you can't say to a family with young kids, "Oh, you can't live here," unless it's a senior housing facility.
So it could be as simple as adding a definition and saying the town of Redding will allow senior housing units?
Yes, yep, I mean-
That's why I would think it should be very simple.
It's a basic step forward in, you know, allowing it. As a conditional use, you would, if someone applied for it, then they'd go through conditional use review, all the usual questions that you have to answer with conditional use and site plan, so.
So, with the senior housing, if you build, let's say, a cottage court, okay, for seniors, but then somebody else wants to come in and build a college cottage court, not for seniors, are, there are different rules for senior housing than there would be normal?
Well, um, the cottage court draft language I just swiped from another town and gave you as, you know, food for thought, not expecting that you would adopt that tonight lock, stock, and barrel, just, just kind of an introductory, here's an example type of thing to discuss, so.
So as a conditional use, Martha, do you have a suggestion for districts where you think, as a zoning expert, it would be appropriate? Like if you were going to look at Redding and say, "Yeah, you could squeeze it into these districts as a conditional use and have it be permissible to do that," what do you have in mind?
Well, if you don't have a cottage court option, then it probably wouldn't work in one of the, you know, twenty-five, ten acre districts, I wouldn't think. I mean, even, even a five acre district, it would be tough, I mean, the cost of land for that would be really high, so, I mean, I was thinking more of the-
But if you put it in the village, the city, with adding all those residents, would be so much more versus on a penny per person?
Right, I mean, you've got that, I, I don't know anything about this property, who owns it, or what is, what it's used for, planned for, but you know, you have the big yellow house right in the middle of town, potentially could be converted for senior housing?
Senior housing, so you could take a big house, chop it up into apartments right in the middle of town, do a conversion and make it eligible for fifty-five plus.
Right, I mean-
I like that idea, that makes sense. That's very different than the idea of a cottage court, uh, so taking existing housing stock, allowing it to be, um, multi-unit, and have a covenant that restricts it to seniors makes sense. The cottage court, I have, I have to get my head around that. So, I don't want to speak for the group, me personally, I think I need to go back to the senior housing piece and muddle through some of the scenarios and make sure that I understand the implications of these cottage courts.
I agree.
Yeah, and, and the cottage court's really not, maybe jumped the damn line, I didn't put the senior housing, cottage court is completely different.
I think that's right, yeah.
Right.
Because it could be for young families, it could be for any, it could be for fifty-five or older, it could be for assisted living, it could be a number of different things, a cottage court.
I mean, I'm comfortable with the definition of senior housing, and if we want to explore adding a definition of senior housing, and then considering putting that in as a conditional use in, uh, whatever the appropriate districts are, conceptually, I think that's a good idea. We'd have to decide which districts that is, are, are one, five, more.
Right.
Uh, and then there's the whole cottage court question.
Right, and if, once you, maybe once you have time to really digest the cottage court concept, you know, you'll, you'll, that'll help determine.
Okay. So, I think, um, I think we have come to the end of our list, so everything we've been discussing tonight is on the work plan, which is our guiding document for trying to get through the revisions that are suggested, and in some cases required by new state law, to our zoning ordinance, which is what we're working on throughout the year. Did I say that right? If I get it wrong, please let me know. Um, I think we've gotten through the things that were on our list for tonight, and some of it we are going to revisit, like lighting under the performance standards, and with accessory on-farm business, whether older businesses would be grandfathered or how it would affect them. Affordable housing definition we liked, we're checking, we're just confirming that it's making people more eligible, and we're going to just try to double-check if that's mandated or permissive. And then I think all of us are going to think through this cottage court development question. I, I think, I think it's correct to say that we all like the idea of a definition of senior housing and having that as an option for a conditional use, right?
Yeah, we look at that, and I think the consensus would be we want to welcome seniors to be part of Redding.
We have a lot of seniors in Redding, in Redding.
Right.
I'm getting more senior every day. Um, so I think, you know, we should all go back to those conditional use charts at the beginning in section, what section is that, Martha? Two?
Point two, five point two.
Section two, and run those, run that through the chart and see what makes sense in our minds, and come back and talk about that more next time, if that works for everybody.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, so that takes us through what we had on our list for the work plan for today, Martha, unless there's something I'm missing?
No.
Okay. Shanann, I hope you got all that down, I'm gonna, I also took notes, so between the two of us, we can figure out what to focus on the next meeting.
Okay, at the meet.
Okay, good, all right, so let's, uh, let's move off the zoning ordinance and talk about next month's meeting date. I have May sixth is what it's supposed to be, does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Just, just so you know, it does conflict again with the school board meeting. I know it did, this, this meeting is well conflicted, and for some reason, I think normally they don't, but I don't know why that happened again for next month, but I, I just noticed it on the calendar today.
So ours is always the first Monday or something like that, right, first Monday?
I think the school board meeting is not usually the first Monday, but because of the break in April, it was moved to this date. I don't know why in May it is now also on the first Monday.
Does this affect your ability to be at-
No, but we're working on reproposing the, um-
Budget?
Budget, and I think there are people who are interested parties in both situations that might like to-
Do you think we should be trying to accommodate that?
I'm putting it out there, so you're aware.
Well, if you were putting it out there, I'd be happy to accommodate that.
Um, so let's see, we're talking May sixth, which is a Monday, um...
I know the fire and rescue meeting's on the seventh, um, I don't think there's any town meetings on the eighth.
I can, I can do the seventh or the eighth, uh, assuming that this room is free.
I'm good with either one, seventh or eighth.
Either one.
Okay, um, should we not do it on fire and rescue night?
I don't know if that impacts anyone else, I'm fine either day.
Ray, are you on fire or rescue?
Just if there's any other interested parties for, um, position filling, I don't know if that would cause a conflict for potential applicants.
Good point, should we say the eighth? I'll, I'll confirm with the town clerk that that is okay, and if for some reason that's not okay, I'll get back to you by email, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the rescheduling site visit and the hearing for variance conditional use permit for the Hall Art Foundation, which is a zoning matter. I don't know, Jane, do you want to adjourn our planning meeting and start the zoning meeting under your chairwomanship, or should we just talk about it?
You usually do the zoning first, and then the planning. If you have a hearing like that, I've discussed that before.
Okay.
Or, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, I don't think.
Okay.
But anyway, we could try that, I'm just hoping that all be, that information's available by that time to be able to, well, I think, um, didn't Bob say something about we could do part of it and then part of it later if that was necessary?
I, I think-
There's actually two permits that need to be done. Right?
So-
Yes.
Where do things stand now? Have you communicated with representatives of the Hall Art Foundation that the schedule, it is not yet scheduled?
I just communicated that I had to delay it, and that was fine.
Okay.
I didn't say, like, you know, that it was going to be scheduled at any time.
And we don't have to have it on the same night as the planning meeting, right? We can have it anytime.
I think that, um, it may be a well-attended meeting, so if we don't have a lot on the agenda for the PC, we could do it, you know, the ZB is with it on May eighth, you know. I mean, maybe if there's a deadline, May eighth, then all the, if, you know, it'll happen by that, if you've given it, you know, if I have a deadline, it'll get older.
Well, we pretty, we, we often have, you know, we have the work plan for the zoning bylaws to try to match our grant terms, we will always have a pretty robust planning conversation.
Well, then we can make it a different-
Make it a standalone?
Yeah.
And we have, we're doing a site visit with-
Yeah, we can do a site visit, I mean, I know it was planned, so we can, because I haven't really seen it up close, like all the aspects of it either, so it might be a good idea to do the site visit, and I'm looking, like, what about May fifteenth, it's a Wednesday, or May thirteenth is a Monday? Like, I'll be aware.
May thirteenth is the select board meeting.
Okay.
So what we were originally planning on doing is the site visit and then go back to do the hearing?
Yeah.
And the public's invited to the site visit, correct?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
We need to figure that out.
Usually, yeah, usually they're open.
Yeah, they can just come, right?
Yeah.
I think, I think anyone can come and walk, walk around and have a look, right?
You're not supposed to-
During the site visit?
Yeah, you're not supposed to discuss the application during the site visit, other than, you know, minimally, oh, is that in the wall, you know, or is that?
Understood. So Jane, what was our original date for the meeting?
Eight.
The eighth?
It was April-
Fifteen.
Oh, our original date for the meeting was April fifteenth, which was a Monday.
The fifteenth, okay. Do we think April twenty-second is too soon?
Um, too soon, April twenty-second and then seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there was a, there was an email that I saw earlier this afternoon that outlined some conditions that Bob, both to Mark about. Are we clear, I, I'm not clear on what those, that outreach means for us in our meeting. Are you clear, Jane?
No.
Okay, so I think we, and I'm not sure how we go about this to create total transparency and, and communication with the public, so I think we need to figure that out before we dig ourselves into a corner.
Right, um, I mean, I guess the public can look up, and, you know, as soon as the hall has to apply for conditional use permit and a zoning, so as soon as they do that, then I guess more information can be forced up.
They've already put in one application, or correct?
One, but the problem-
Of publication?
The problem with the one is that it, it talks about both sides of the road. So, conditional use is for the, I'll say, the west side, and the other permit is for the east side, so-
The defining factor is the wall, the west side?
Uh, the defining factor is the wall on the, uh, east side and the berm on the west side.
So, we need two permits, seven, make, they did one permit including both, so-
Right.
They, they know that they need to do that?
Yes, I spoke to Maurice Brandt, yeah, and I haven't spoken to Bob Allen yet, I know he met with Martha and Jason Rasmussen. See, there's, there's some conflicting, uh, answers that- answers that I'm getting between the DEC, Department of Environmental Conservation, um, you know, there there's between, there are lawyer recognizers that it should be two different permits, so I don't know why there's not. I sent you all those emails.
Yeah.
So that's the thing, I think we need to really go through all that information and really parse it out and, you know, like, I wanted to make a timeline of all these, because the, the permit actually came in, like, November thirteenth.
The application.
So, the application, right. So it's been well beyond. I mean, we add that time. We're not, like, in violation of anything. But once we, you know, uh, there's a time limit once we have the meeting. So, uh, that's why I'd like to get all the information possible before, because I think it could be, like, contentious issue and we wanted to write by everybody, you know, involved.
So let's get something on the books. Let's get it scheduled.
So that's why I said that May fifteenth should give us enough time to really hit home through all this information. All three of us can do it and then, you know, whatever perspective we all have, we can bring that to the table.
Well, I like the May eighth.
Our setup.
Yeah, I like the May eighth because then we can explain in our next meeting before that to the public exactly what the process looks like.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah. I agree.
So what time is that gonna be, Jane?
Um, well, it was the site visit for the last one scheduled at four and the meeting at six.
Okay. Do you wanna do that?
So, yeah, I think that's good.
Okay.
So that's Wednesday, fifteenth.
Wednesday, the fifteenth.
Okay.
At four, it's.
So you will be in touch with the, uh, Hall Foundation people?
Yeah.
And let them know? Um.
Yeah. And I'll, you know, I'll contact everybody that needs to be contacted.
Okay. And to the extent that we feel like we need additional information or feedback from the state or from the zoning administrator or from anyone else, we know what that is and you'll reach out to them?
Hopefully, yeah.
Okey dokey.
Hopefully, nobody knows. My battery is, my battery is dying, just.
Okay.
I mean, I.
Don't let, last comment before we
Go ahead.
leave this. So we have one advice from the department saying in writing, and then we have another one that's verbal that's not in writing, correct? And we we need two in writing, is that is that my understanding?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure? Okay.
Because I see, I see conflicts in both of those things, so.
Okay, so we need to.
We just need to go for, yeah.
We need it in writing.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, any other business?
I don't have anything.
Seeing none. Um, any other comments from anyone, any members of the public that we haven't addressed so far? Okey dokey. Um, so that concludes our agenda for tonight. Um, thanks to everybody for helping make it really focused and efficient. Um.
It's awesome. Great meeting.
And our next meeting, subject to availability of this room, which I'm gonna confirm, is gonna be Wednesday, May eighth to accommodate the, uh, school board and safety and rescue, fire and rescue, um, and Stacy and Shanann and Jane. I'll confirm that to you guys by email. And Martha, are you good for the eighth, by the way?
I think so, yes.
Okay. Uh, yeah, you're really critical to that meeting. And, uh, yeah, that takes us to the end. If, uh.
Then I move to adjourn.
Okay, so moved. I'm gonna second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Okay.
Have a good night.